Please, I'd like this to be very casual, so feel free to get up and get yourself more snacks or La Croix if you're so inclined and it wouldn't be so shabby if this sparked discussion about issues, so feel free, at any point you have a question, interrupt me, let's stop, let's chat, let's uh let's enjoy it. So I put together this PowerPoint presentation just to kind of we're relatively young commission in our experience and I'm even I'm new to, we're all kind of fledgling at this, so I do my best as well. See what I've got here, I don't know, okay, so this slide, what is planning, I just, according to the the officials, the American Planning Association, the goal of planning is to maximize the health, safety and economic well-being of all people living in our community. It's involves thinking about how we move around our community, how we can attract and retain thriving businesses and where we want maybe how we want to live and opportunities for recreation. Planning helps create communities of lasting value. The comprehensive plan is a visioning document and the zoning code contains the rules and regulations for implementing that vision. In other words, zoning is the codified embodiment of the comprehensive plan. It governs what property owners can do with their private property to achieve orderly relationship between land uses. And we say, when we say zoning, we also mean subdivision regulations which include both plating and minor subdivisions. Because the difference between the two is plating is usually more than two lots, minor subdivision is only two lots. It's slow. Well, I just clicked it like six times, so I might be in trouble. Am I turning it off? Is there a turn it off button? Hold on, the battery fell out.
That is a good explanation.
There we go, alright. Twenty forty comprehensive plan was adopted in twenty eighteen and is available on the city's website. Under each planned land use category are a number of zoning districts. The zoning code and zoning map cannot conflict with the comprehensive plan.
Yet they often.
Sometimes they do, yeah. I think when we are looking to change, to have a progress or development or redevelopment, something may be commercial, maybe we want it to be housing in the future and that's, that's when the two will um align, because that proposal hasn't been proposed yet. We just missed something, we're human. So in the city of Richfield, we have four residential districts, three commercial districts, three mixed-use districts, one industrial district and four overlay districts. Overlay districts modify the underlying zoning of a property by either adding or removing regulations of the underlying district. They typically cover a geographical area that is similar, such as a natural resource, like a shoreland overlay district might be an example, or a historic area. They are used to unify the area or differentiate it from other areas of the city with the same zoning. All of the districts that start with a P indicate a PUD zoning. And a PUD, you must rezone to one of these PUD districts in order to be a PUD. It is, that rezoning is essentially creating a new, unique zone based on the original underlying zoning district. And the districts that I have highlighted in gray are the districts that are not shown on the zoning map. They exist, but there are currently no parcels within the city that have these zoning designations.
Can I ask a quick question about the residential zoning? That I meant to ask during the duplex conversation, but I never did. What is the difference between low the R district and the R one district?
The R one district is a larger lot size. I think it's fifteen thousand square feet.
Ooh, I remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, like to
Is that where the difference is in Richfield where we have some lots are like seventy-five wide versus sixty wide or fifty wide?
Most of the R one zone is over by Wood Lake.
Yeah, there's like three pockets, like that's a pocket. I don't remember where else.
They're just large, because they're, they're near the natural resource, they're larger to kind of protect, help protect the natural resource.
Oh, those, those the ones that got consolid, those two categories get consolidated with the recent reason, or I think it's something else.
So there's still, like, that's, I mean
Was that, was that MR one?
I was vote, I'm on for the duplex vote, but I was curious why it didn't include them.
That was
MR one.
Do you have the zoning map in those slides?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, is it next?
I remember, wasn't there a specific conversation to keep the R which one's which, which one can I
The low density residential, the first one, is the one we just amended to include duplexes.
Okay, so it's the R one that was intentionally like, these will be left out of
Yeah.
like zoning for, you know.
For the purposes of that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't, when the comprehensive plan was put together, wasn't that like the reason they were zoned with separate distinctions? Or was that a pre-existing thing that already was?
That was a pre-existing thing.
Okay.
They've, they've been like that, I believe since the eighties.
Okay.
Yeah, probably.
Sure, I think I remember, yeah. Sean asked why they kind of left all the lots by the lake. And
There was a, eighty of reasons?
Any of them good?
Well, a general consensus in like in the masses is, in some people's like he mentioned that or opposition.
Politics, whatever.
Politics, the art of the possible.
Yeah. But it is, you know, a pretty special area of
It's, it's, it's pretty small in comparison to the R one dis, the R district, excuse me.
Have you seen the zoning map you just had in the previous slide? The yellow.
Yellow, okay.
Yellow right there by like, what's it called, southeast corner of the drive or whatever.
Apple Lane, Long Grove Park.
Yeah, so duplex it up, of course.
Yeah, so this is the new zoning map with the updated to have the RM one district removed. And um I just highlighted the four overlay districts that we have, the Penn Avenue. Happen there? It's the one on the top left that's outlined? Here we go.
Wow. Very nice, there you go.
And then um, the uh Vets Park, it's not working. Is the battery okay? Okay, okay, I'll just use the pointer. So the Vets Park overlay district is this area just to the south of Vets Park along sixty-six and the intersection of sixty-six and Portland. And then the Cedar Avenue Corridor Overlay District is all along Cedar Avenue. And then finally, the Airport Impact Area Overlay is everything to the east of this line here.
So there's a section of blue, which is across the street from me, that looks like it's a PMR planned multifamily. Is that all planned unit of development?
I don't know where you're pointing to, here, use the pointer. Yeah, that's planned mixed use.
When did that change into
No, multifamily.
Okay, let's say
Is that one planned?
That's where the, that's the Chamberlain apartment.
No, that's across the street from me.
Yes, it is.
It says planned multifamily.
That is the Chamberlain.
Like, you're trailing away.
Chamberlain is right.
It's on the west side of
This is on Seventeenth right here. I'm, this is Chamberlain right here.
The Chamberlain is in three blocks, is in three separate buildings.
This block right here is not. Those are single-family residential right now.
Oh, the Chamberlain is only, it's one north of that street and then two and then three, so you're talking about the southwest quadrant there.
Yeah. Yeah.
That little sliver, yeah.
Interesting.
It was, I mean, yeah, I wasn't here, Sam wasn't here either.
Yeah.
It was probably when Chamberlain was being proposed, because
That was never part of a PUD.
Well, if you go back to the um the twenty forty plan. Does it, does it designate anything?
Yeah, that's a good
I think it's designated
These buildings here
Sorry, I went back to twenty forty.
No.
If you look at like the
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at the roundabout.
Yeah, it's all mixed use, that entire
Mixed use, but it's not a PUD.
The south of the roundabout is the, you mean the Caribou Coffee and the Taco Shop?
You go, so that's, it's the roundabout, first block is the apartment.
Yes.
On Seventeenth, it's on, it's on the uh, side of Seventeenth.
But then there's also on the
Next block where I'm at is all single-family residential, and that's part of, can't be part of a PUD.
It can't, it can't be part of a PUD if it's, it's just not much developed yet, it's just like, at some point they
But it was, how did that get rezoned to PUD though?
Um, I guess it would be the same way anything gets rezoned, it would have to go to planning commission and then sneak
Never did, never for PUD.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I could look it up.
I would like to inquire about that one, because I think that is incorrect.
Yeah, I'll look into it.
I'll look into that.
We'll both take a note.
I always just start imagining, see what it's gonna be.
Okay, yeah, no, that'll be fun, I like learning the history of things and Okay, where were we?
That, that history goes back to
Which was six years ago? That's not too bad. So listed here are the applications that require planning commission review. There are other types of applications that are reviewed administratively, such as simple subdivisions and minor amendments and tannos. I have called out variants in blue font because it is the only land use request where the planning commission is the deciding body. In all other cases, the planning commission is advisory only. It is interesting to note that all cases are a simple majority vote, except for rezoning or regiding away from residential. That requires a supermajority vote. There are also other things the planning commission does that are not land use applications, such as findings of consistency with the comprehensive plan and participating in comprehensive plan. The planning commission cases that come before you are either legislative in nature or judicial in nature. Quasi-legislative hearings are those where you formulate policy for future application, such as the comp plan. Whereas quasi-judicial hearings are those where you apply the previously established policy or regulations, i.e. the zoning, to a specific proposed activity. It is important that the public participate in the quasi-legislative cases just as much, or maybe even more than the quasi-judicial ones, as that is where the most influence and change can be asserted. The quasi-judicial cases are really quite straightforward and are essentially determining whether or not a case complies with code. While conditions of approval may be imposed upon quasi-judicial cases, those conditions must be directly related to the nature of the impacts of the project and must be roughly proportional to the degree or the amount of impact that the proposed project would create. Quasi-legislative cases have more discretion, pretty much like I just said, than quasi-judicial cases. At the very top of this pyramid, we have building permits, which is not a land use case. And in the future, we may want to consider making site plan review a request that can be processed administratively in order to reduce the time and cost for our applicants. I noticed that this pyramid didn't have a PUDs listed, so I would put those right behind a rezoning. The city's discretion with a PUD is high, just like a rezoning, a PUD must be consistent with the comprehensive plan and is up to the city to decide whether or not the flexibility requested from code is a reasonable trade-off for the quality of development that is being proposed. The city has a slightly lower level of discretion approving or denying a variance. For variance, the proof is on the applicant to show that there's a unique, typically physical circumstance or situation as to why the project should not be required to comply when everybody else is. In other words, a variance should be justifiably warranted, not just simply warranted. On the other hand, a PUD allows for a trade-off between the city and the applicant to justify the deviation from the code. A developer might have a need to deviate in one area, so they offer something extra in another area to compensate. Variants is, uh, grant deviation from code without getting anything in return. Although they both allow deviation from code, they are not readily interchangeable. So in other words, you don't go for a PUD for one thing.
You said, Sam, that zoning, rezoning requires supermajority approval.
Rezoning away from residential
Okay.
Requires a supermajority, though. That was a lobby a while ago by the Home Builders Association of Minnesota. That's why that's a unique.
Like a state thing more
So
State statute then?
Yes, I believe it is a state statute.
That overrides the charter even then.
I think our charter question, I don't think our charter specifies, but I
But then it would default.
And, yeah. With that.
So a question about the PUD, when we review a PUD, you know, my understanding is that it's, the city planning commission would only support it if you get something in return. And like, who, as a commissioner, do I look to for understanding what we're getting in return? Is that a city staff question, or is that a developer question?
Developers should be spelling it out to us, who is then in the staff report, turning around and spelling it out to you guys if it's not clear by their narrative.
Yeah, I feel like that, like, some of the PUDs I should have asked for more clarity about, like, what are we really getting for a PUD, like, specifically the um sixty-six, like, across the street from the old Cadre Baffet, but I think it's like, the old churches, that white building.
Like sixty-sixth and first.
Yeah.
Oh, the
It's gonna be a
The Emmys.
Yeah, yes, yeah, but like the very, and like, that one, I was just, I, like, they were, I think they were there, but I guess I just, I was like younger commissioner and I didn't ask in the meeting, like, can we be explicit about what the city is getting out of that, and so
You're saying that
That's a question directed, that I could direct to city staff.
You're saying that in spirit, PUDs, the city's supposed to theoretically get something special, but not formally get out of it.
You're treating
Is that just gonna, how, how do we judge the spirit of an application like that? What are our benchmarks there?
They should spell it out. I do know that they have a little bit, because I just reviewed their building permit, they do have a little bit more open space because of their rooftop uh, kind of feature, they're allowed to count, count that, and they do have that kind of nice little like space to the south side of the building. I can't think of too much more off the top of my head, because I don't work on the project.
And I'm not asking specifically on that one, I just remember in my head during that conversation thinking who, like, is it of the city's responsibility to make sure it's very clear what we're getting in exchange, or like, the developer was posed a question and kind of fumbled it. And was like, should that be something that our city staff should be able to answer very clearly, you know?
I usually answer that question, that's always been on me in the past, so I yeah, that will be on me.
Point of it, right, is because if we, we're giving them the flexibility, because otherwise we might not project might not work for that space, right? I mean, that's the whole whole point, the flexibility is so that we're gaining that project.
Project in general, I mean
I mean, that's part of it, right?
viewed that way, if the project is that desirable in that area, for whatever reasons, the probably
My bar would be, sorry to interrupt, but my bar would be a little bit higher for that, like, not just to make sure it goes forward, but like,
No, no, I
I think there was some like architectural interest in that building that might have, or, you know, like
Oh, and they also had the commercial on the ground floor, I think that was a big thing, Ryan thought.
So it's like, it's not just to make sure it can happen, but to also like, make sure it's a quality, which I'm sure, yeah.
No. Yeah.
Yep.
Um, is that still happening?
It is, I um there's two things left that they need to fix on their building plan to get a green permit.
Okay.
So close to building permit. They few holes in the funding. I would expect them to break around yet this year, yeah.
Somebody dug a loophole on like the south corner of that, just cause
Well, that was me.
Right by the neighbor's garden. There's a big
Might be a soil boring, depending on how big it is.
Yeah.
It's really big, it's
Like, um
Oh, no, I don't know.
I guess it's
It could be a driveway, you know.
Been taken down.
Drive past it.
You gotta check it out, you're gonna go right past it.
It's like a little
It's like a abandoned house.
Yeah, it was a church, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's that land.
Okay, I figured something was going on. I didn't like
It's, there's been multiple.
Yeah, a few, a few failed.
Are you still talking about the Emmy?
Just making sure.
What's, what's it called?
Is that okay that we're sidetracking you?
Yes, totally, I was
What's the name of the development that?
Emmy?
The Emmy?
It's not the Emmy anymore, the, the developer who, I, okay, I was also a brand new planner and I had no idea what was happening, but the I remember the original developer named an Emmy after his daughter, I think, and then sold it to this current developer who has named it
One oh one sixty-six, I think.
And that's the name.
Yes, how lame is that? That's why I keep calling it the Emmy.
That's a terrible name.
Isn't that
I'll be surprised if it's those
Is it? Look, for me
Because every developer that has tried to develop that spot
Emmy Golden Gold, Oscar Tony.
Oh, that even
It would be awful.
Cost or whatever.
More thing is pretty odd, um
Well, the, the neighbors have also been involved.
I do feel like one oh one sixty-six is a placeholder name, and I really am holding my breath hoping that they will do something else.
I hope they call it Deacon Central.
Um, okay. So, okay, so the whole point of a public hearing, as we all know, is to have the community come and have a discussion about the particular request. Uh, the city is required to notice most public hearings in two ways, I say most, because sometimes we only have to notice them in one way. But most of them require post-mail notice to all property orders within three hundred and fifty feet. And legal notice published in the local newspaper under the classified section, and yes, people can read that, I do sometimes get calls from people that live nowhere near the project because they saw the classifieds. So our local newspaper is the Sun Current. And comprehensive plans and rezonings are called out in green text because since May twenty eighteen, the city has a policy of going above and beyond statutory requirements in these two cases. Okay, so for comprehensive plan amendments and rezonings, the city expands the post-mail list to five hundred feet instead of three fifty. And we require onsite signage and we require a neighborhood meeting.
Are good tools.
The neighborhood meeting thing?
Let's consider a neighborhood meeting.
What's considered a neighborhood meeting? So we normally have them notice to this whatever same so, well, I say normally, like, then it's like but we do have one coming through now, and we said use the same distance we're gonna use, which is five hundred feet. So um, and then um, they just, and we don't tell them what they have to say or do, but you know, whoever shows up, they're just supposed to talk to them about their project and would preferably get feedback, and ideally revise the plans according to the feedback before submitting to the city, but, you know.
I have a question about the indication tools that the notices in the newspaper and the meetings. Are there any other things that seem as to notify people about the purpose of the projects?
Well, we post it on the website
We have a website for redevelopments.
But not until
Okay.
Yeah.
When we, when it actually get posted though, I don't think it gets posted until later in the process.
No, the, um, because that redevelopment page has proposed projects. Uh, and then it has
Under construction?
Approved, under construction, completed. Um, but those are like big projects, like we wouldn't be posted, uh, Eye Clinic, for example, because it's a small project.
And, and so often, you know, commission meetings, managers do show up for the public hearing. It's it's because they believe something that they've read somewhere could have been
Been next door.
Right, and, and I just think sometimes, right, that, that newspaper notice gives people the opportunity to like change perception of something before anybody else is talking.
Well, you remember the meeting where the woman was talking about a change of density, and she came in and she was all fired up that there were gonna be giant skyscrapers being built.
And
We dealt with it around brewery, couldn't we?
Yeah, well, the
And so, like, I'm, I'm just like
So what do you
An advocate for over-communicating.
So you think we should maybe notice more, put more information in that notice and be more descriptive?
Or I, like, the Richfield recap, I think that's like a really effective tool.
That is
And I would love to see like, like, I was a little bit disappointed that we didn't have
Yes.
Here's what's going on.
Better communication around what the city did with the duplex changes, and I can see where that's a double-edged sword, but it was, like, I mean, it's fair that when residents hear about it at the last minute, and they go to a city council meeting, city, I mean, we've already done a lot of work on this issue, like, they are catching up late in the game, like, would have loved to see that in Richfield recap six months ago, saying this is under discussion. I know the inventory, like, the survey thing that was put out, like, the city did some communication about the survey. But nothing was ever really kind of explicit about what was happening, and I, I mean
Yeah. Yeah.
There's reasons why that may be, but I just think the Richfield recap is like a really effective tool for getting information out.
What's Richfield's recap?
It's like an email that you can sign up for, and it gives like the top like five stories happening that week in Richfield.
You can get it as a text message or any, yeah, it's really handy.
City puts it out on their social media channels every week, Tuesday or Friday.
They do it in
Like when
The social media channels as well.
And they made the park, the emergency parking change, like, they covered that in the Richfield recap, so people like really understood, okay, now there's gonna be these safe zones where you can park during the snow emergency, like, that kind of thing, they explained it so that because I could imagine there would be people who would hear, oh, now people are just gonna leave their cars on the road and it's not, the plowing isn't gonna happen. But like, the communication was pretty clear that like, this is going to be allowed in these zones to park during snow emergencies, so that people have a place to put their cars. It was just really clear, and I think that helped head off some of the ideas that people get when they hear
Communication prevents that public hearings.
And I will admit that, you know parking has been an issue around most apartment buildings during snow emergencies. You know, there's places that where people don't move their cars.
So
But even outside of the issue of like parking, like, the idea of making sure that like, you know
But, but the communication
I, the city seems to have a pretty robust Facebook page, like, if they can get, if they can I am someone who thinks that the earlier you can tell people this is under discussion, the more helpful that is.
Instead of them hearing like, oh, they're doing this?
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be
There's always going to be people that are gonna say that, always, but I, it's just like, I think the cities, you could, I
Never, yeah.
Yeah.
Feel like in recent years, there's been effort to really increase and improve the communication. And I mean, it's work, I mean, like, that takes time, it's someone's, you know. But the more that that can happen, I think
Either of those avenues would get it out beyond three hundred and fifty feet right now, which is right now, unless you read the classifieds, those are the only people that are gonna know about it, is the people who live in PUDs.
Not everything needs to get all that attention, really divisive stuff.
And the bigger projects.
And just like an explanation of the rezoning for the residential thing, I think a, a well-written paragraph could have headed up headed off a lot of that opposition if it had been noticed in a way of dance, because that woman, the person who came and or I watched the council meeting and someone was there saying, oh, there's gonna be triplexes and fourplexes, like, that was, there was nowhere was that anywhere in discussion.
Except it was all over Facebook.
But that
You know, like, it was, yeah.
Exactly, so if there, if like, if the recap, I think you're right, the recap, the recap had a paragraph that was like
Right, right.
this is something that we're planning and here's what, here's what our thought is.
A lot of this stuff happens in a vacuum.
Yeah, and our communities and, and our neighbor, our peer communities have similar policies and they haven't noticed that it's done anything negative, and so we're hoping to do like, just something like that, I think that would have headed off some of those concerns.
Yeah, I like the
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
Okay, I, it's actually, I'm done with cases and public hearings, and then I just have a couple of like standard protocol reminders in relation to conflicts of interest, gifts, data requests. When in doubt, err on the side of caution, either excuse yourself, don't accept, or don't engage. Also, I cannot emphasize enough, if you have a question about anything prior to a meeting, please give Nellie or I a call. We can do a better job of answering your questions, more particularly at the meeting, if you let us know ahead of time what they're going to be. And we really appreciate the heads up.
Even if it's on Monday afternoon, because sometimes I'm like, what do you mean, I'm gonna be honest, like, on a Monday afternoon, and I'm like I don't wanna reach out to you so late in the day, and I'll just keep my mouth shut, but
No. Yeah, no.
Even if you, even if you reached out to us like thirty minutes before the meeting, we, we could, it was like that.
Yeah, then we can all talk about like our WWE moves and how to handle it. Yeah, then we can all talk about like our WWE moves and how to handle it. I'm gonna hold the chair.
You're gonna lift him up in the air.
Yeah, this is the signal.
Um, so, okay.
Cause those meetings.
Attached to the um, to the the very lengthy staff report was a guide for uh for running a meeting. Um, it's extremely helpful if the speaker states their name before speaking, this is especially helpful in regards to motions. And then. Oh, yeah, everybody take a mock.
I don't know.
Um, some people in the audience may have a question that isn't necessarily either for or against a project. So, when when you're in the chair, if you're up there calling for anybody that has anything else to say or has any questions, um, if you call for or against. These people won't know when to stand up, cause they're not either for or against, they're just trying to stay neutral, so. Um, just let people stand up as they're comfortable and at the end, just be sure to ask like multiple times, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Really, and like, if people maybe they haven't spoken, be like, are you, anybody else?
Anybody?
Um, and then also in relation to the applicants, sometimes applicants are really shy and it's really frightening for them to have to be in this situation at all. They're only there because they absolutely have to, so if you don't, if the planning commission doesn't have any questions for an applicant, they don't have to. Don't make them, don't call them to the, to the, to stand up and say, yeah, yeah, let let them go, let them.
Don't put them in the spotlight, make them stop.
Yeah.
I do find the developers, like, when we ask them to make a presentation, I find their presentations very helpful, like, I mean, and I think they're talking about like, yeah.
Yeah. Developer?
You're talking about like the 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 shop that wanted to add like a table for deli service or something, so you mean like.
Yeah, yeah.
Not drilling that kind of thing where it's like not a big deal, yeah.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, but like, and there's times where it's like, I feel like we could ask more, uh, help of our developers to do a more refined presentation of what they're.
Right, right.
Yeah.
It's not just about, um, like zoning, but here's the project, like, help me understand the project better and then, you know.
You're here, it's waiting. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Make sure I understand the scope of our decision-making at the meeting, but context of the projects, I I find that very helpful to hear about.
Well, and especially for the people in the audience who maybe haven't read the staff report in advance, like you guys have.
Right. Sorry.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um.
Okay.
Um, so.
Yeah.
So, my vision for this work session was to just kind of casually, you know, in a non-hobby-watching scenario. Run through a couple of of meetings where we practice saying our name and repeating the motion and maybe even amending a motion in the middle of making a motion and things like that. So, um, nobody has to run a meeting if you don't wanna mock, run a meeting, um. But I was kinda thinking the chair, the vice chair and the secretary, cause you guys might actually be called upon to do it. Um, and um, so. I have, uh. This is, that's not very, no, I just have my glasses on, um, this is like kind of the outline of like the order of how things progress. Um, and I can leave that up there and then we can use this, um, this agenda, just to kinda, um, be a mock agenda to run through. And um, I was kinda hoping Eddie, you'd go first.
Sure, yeah.
Yes.
So, are we starting with just as if it's an agenda item and?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, oh, we're, okay, we're going through as as, alright, okay.
It's right, yeah. Yeah.
Alright, I call the this April twenty-fourth meeting of the planning commission to order. I put it on the agenda as the approval of the last meeting's minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
My motion.
Who are you?
Mr. Kaylee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
It's been, a motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Say anything.
Oh, Charles in second.
Alright, moved and seconded, is there any discussion on approval of the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The minutes have been approved. Um, now, uh, we need to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Got a moment to review the agenda, then we just need a motion to approve.
So, Mr. Sturza.
In the second.
Mr. Kaylee's second. I just don't like awkward silence.
Is there any discussion of the agenda?
I think it's a great agenda. I think it's the best agenda, we have to.
Is there anyone who wants to speak against the agenda?
Can we move to strike number two item on on the agenda till next month?
Alright.
Hmm.
You wanna speak to, you wanna speak to that?
I, I, uh. Um, the the uh, the developer I don't see is here, so I would like to uh not hear it this month.
For a typical fashion, I would say city staff. How do you feel about that?
Chair commissioners, um, that is a, a not inappropriate, um, thing to consider. I would, um, wait until you get to that item, open the public hearing, hear anybody that may have attended tonight expecting it to be on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And then close or continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
You go. Alright, um, did you wanna continue with the motion or withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion, alright.
Then all in, any other discussion on the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda has been approved. Um, oh, uh, so we're not, we don't have an open forum at this.
Yeah, I took it out just.
Okay, no, that's fine, um, so our.
And we need no votes for an open forum, right?
Yep.
Like, no votes ever.
It's just people to act, like, can just.
Yeah, but like.
Yeah, there's no voting.
We don't need a vote to close it.
To close it.
And we don't have to say anything to them either, they can just talk and we don't have to respond at all.
Yeah.
And then for a public hearing, you don't need a vote to open it, but you need a vote to close it, right?
Yes.
Open forum is not an official public hearing, right?
Correct.
Cause it's not on any particular topic.
Yes.
This is discuss anything not on the agenda.
This is your turn. Right.
Okay.
They they actually changed that recently because, uh, I can't remember why, but you you can't tell people that they can't talk about something on the agenda anymore. So they technically could talk about something on the agenda.
Oh. Oh.
I I remember I had to edit it and reword it, because the the council did.
That's that's good.
Is there a script?
And you could still say it's intended for items not on the agenda, because we'll have time for discussing the other things later in the.
You know what, there is a little like intro script at the beginning of the, when you say where the planning commission and where, you know, items go to the council.
So there, there's a word doc that Catherine, Catherine created.
Got it, yeah.
And then I modified it when I took over as chair.
Yeah. And then I modified it again.
And I think I've, I passed it along to city staff, it, you know, you know.
Yes, I think.
Is that something that's just at the.
No, I should, or I I should, I should send it to the both of you.
Oh, I can send it to.
Okay.
There's a word doc that I've, you know, I would modify each week to.
Yeah.
I've had to uh.
Reflect.
Cover a couple.
What was on the agenda.
Um, but I I watched other communities, you know, and how they do it, there's freedom.
But there are some that that are really strict that they don't respond.
We need to make sure that you're not sure.
Do not freestyle.
No, um, you call that when you're freestyling.
Ad libbing, nothing's wrong with that and and you know, and I did that at the end, you know, I. At the beginning, I was strictly on the. Because especially when you're just here showing.
People are coming to see your show, you guys.
You know, we had so many extra things with the dial and number.
Oh my gosh, this is not a normal meeting itself, let's let's try and avoid it becoming one.
Alright, so.
Okay, so, the uh first item on the agenda is we have a public hearing to consider a three-part request. Uh, site plan review, two side variances and a one-stall parking variance for MSP commercials headquarters at sixty-four thirty-six and Avenue Cell. Um, staff, do you have a report?
Um, thank you Chair Commissioners, these people blah 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 blah, blah 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 blah, blah blah blah, thank you.
Alright, commissioners, do you have any questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, this sounds familiar. Have we talked about this at a recent meeting in in length?
Actually, we have, this is on the agenda.
Excellent, excellent.
Didn't reach you back.
Therefore, I have no other questions.
Alright, no other questions for staff and commissioners, alright, so the this uh public hearing is now open, any members of the public could like to speak on this issue, please approach the podium and state your name and address and, uh. Who would like to hear from, does anyone, do we have any calls or emails about this?
Uh, Chair and Commissioners, we do not.
Alright. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this? And I, it it appears the developer has not, uh.
Yeah.
Developer has not showed up.
She had a flat tire.
What's the best way for us from during our question time to build the chair? To to that we have a question, kind of just kind of freelanced it all this time, raise our hand, do we say, Chair, can I speak?
I'll release.
Yeah.
Just do that.
I do like.
Not a wing, can't you?
Most commissioners.
Or perhaps just a little.
But.
A little, a little, yeah, I figured.
A little commissioner for weekend. Yes, interrupt and start speaking.
But like, that is like, I mean, but I have been on commissions where it was not, um.
Excellent job.
Where it was very uncomfortable, like I'm gonna be blunt, and I do think it's important to not speak until you're acknowledged by the chair. Because I feel like there can be overlapping talking, there can be a disrespect of a commissioner. If you speak before you're acknowledged by the chair, there's been times where I've been cut off and haven't been able to finish what I've wanted to say. Because a commissioner spoke before I was done and it feels pretty disrespectful. So, I do think it is important, even though we all have, um, a pretty cordial, um, relationship that. We don't know when it's gonna get, when we're gonna disagree, when we're going, when it could get more contentious. And I think having the practice of. Giving a little bit more formally serves us well when something contentious does come up. That's my two cents.
That's fair.
Can I give my two cents having been here? It was really helpful to be recognized from the chair, cause many times it will feel like, uh, interruptions or. Respect for the chair in some some ways, if you just start speaking. And and actually that is why I put in my statement, please be recognized by the chair. Because it wasn't people in the audience, it was actually this group, that I felt like it was getting out of control at some points. And, you know, just just to be recognized by the chair, I think is always, um, you know, cause you know, being up there is not easy, being chair. You know, try to keep, you know, your your goal is to try to keep things moving and people respectful of each other. Sometimes it gets rather hard.
As if we really, we're not trying to. Question, um, with discussions, who decides, how is it decided when that discussion is over? I I feel like at times I've I've noticed that like, maybe like, it's still discussing and it's been kind of cut short.
Um, the chair can uh call for a motion or somebody makes a motion, um, is usually the two ways in which that happens. Um, and. Um. But let me back up a minute, I'm sorry, because usually a motion is actually made first and then you're just, and then you second it and then you're discussing the motion. So, um, calling for the vote is what I meant to say.
Sure.
And that is, that is done by the chair.
And if, conversely, if the chair isn't calling for the vote and the discussion is dragging, someone can move to.
To.
Call for a vote and then cut and end the discussion, right?
Is it appropriate to ask the chair, will you vote on this or is is the, I propose, I would like to make a motion, is that?
I think sometimes it wouldn't necessarily be a formal.
Right, it could be.
Doesn't need to be a formal thing, it could be, I think.
Sounds like.
It sounds like everyone has shared their point of view and then, you know, then, yeah, I think that's good, are we ready to take a vote?
And when we, um, so when you ask for comment for, uh, before you open the public hearing, or you've asked for questions from commissioners. That's the time, like, so we're in a public hearing. Yeah, there's the commissioners, do you have any questions? That's a time for questions and not really like, this is how I feel about a project. And then you open the public here, or you open the public hearing, it's closed, then it's time for us to share our opinions on it, like, not the.
Not before the public hearing.
Cause we're using the public's.
Cause I can tell. Right, right, I'm just saying like, and I get it, and I think in the meeting, sometimes we can get, it's a little bit fuzzy, like, and like, you start asking questions and then you start, you know.
Sure.
Adding what you think about it, but I think that there's been some conversations that I probably have cut short because it felt like we were getting into the conversation part of the. Um, application before we opened the public hearing and it's like, the that first you have questions of commissioners is really just about questions for clarity. And not for our two cents, right?
Not for substantive conversation.
And I think it's super helpful if you have a question for the developer, if you ask me or Nellie and, um, and then we say, well. You know, I I'm not, I'm not sure the exact answer to that and that would probably be a good question for the, and then the developer gets a heads up. That like, oh, they're gonna, they're gonna be asking me this and he could be thinking, if especially if he's somebody that, now, most seasoned developers are pretty good at standing up and talking in front of somebody.
Sure.
But if it's an applicant and they're not, and they can be formulating what their answer might be in their head, or or even writing down the questions as you guys have them and then when they get up to speak, they're a little bit more prepared.
That's a good distinction to make, um, what we're supposed to ask you before the public hearing and all that, yeah.
And then.
Glad you brought that up.
Then if we have the public hearing and say it's about a. And there's forty-five questions that come up in that public hearing, let's make it simple, let's say there's ten questions that come up. Is it the chair or is it the city staff that then have the opportunity, like, to answer those questions? Is the chair supposed to be saying, these are the questions that I heard, or is it city staff that's written down the ten questions?
Well, typically, actually, it is the chair, there's a lot to, I mean, I try to take notes and I try to, you know, like, um. Track also as much as possible, but, um. Then the chair can either direct a question to staff or back to the, well, I heard, uh, the woman in red ask about, you know, the parking. Uh, developer, can you stand, can you come back to the podium and and address her question?
And that's an important step in the public hearing that I think we often, just in general, skip over of like, now that we've had these. Three questions brought up at a public hearing, like, okay, how are we going to flush them, flush them out, like, um, and I guess I didn't realize it was the chair's responsibility to do that.
So, are you meaning for, uh, during the same period of the public hearing between people, things, you're talking about then after we close?
You tally it up. Yep.
Okay, okay, no, that makes more sense.
You tally, yeah, like, at least that's the way I've seen it done, is that like, there's a running list of questions that come up in the public hearing.
Okay.
And then once the public hearing's closed, then.
Then we can call the developer back.
Back up, or like, okay, here are the, you know, six questions and.
And some of them you guys will know the answers to because you've read the staff report and maybe couldn't even address yourself without.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But, yeah, but they should be answered out loud, even if we know them, because the resident doesn't know the answer to it.
Yes, yeah.
Uh-huh.
Sure.
Yep.
So, and that's, oftentimes I say things out loud just because I want.
The stamp.
Air in the, yeah.
Do you, how do you feel about if a, like, just even your personal, if a resident has a question and it is something very big. Very fundamental that we would, that any of us could answer, because it's just a basic thing, do you think that we should just answer it or do you think we should wait until we close the public hearing, what are your thoughts about that?
I mean, I think each chair probably gets to decide that, but I think that you, um, like, public hearings for listening, collect them all and then at the end you answer them.
Okay.
I mean, if it's a, I can see how like, if it's a quick, like, you know, we're talking about two stories and not three stories.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's the kind of thing.
Like that could.
They're wildly, they're wildly off-topic or whatever.
Yeah, or like, um, I could see why, or like a clarifying so that if you're getting the same, you know, incorrect statement over and over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could see why a quick.
Something, yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, this is actually the site across the street from the Dairy Queen, not the one by Target or whatever, yeah.
Correct. Right.
Right.
I do think like.
No, you're talking about something that we are not discussing tonight, that sort of thing.
But I, like, it can become really un, like, I've seen meetings kind of go sideways.
Yeah.
Because people try to answer the questions with with the public hearing still open.
Right.
And it becomes more of a discussion and I don't think that that's the purpose of the public hearing, the public hearing is, the purpose is to hear what people have to say about it. It's not to engage, in my mind.
Cause they're not always asking questions, sometimes they're just making a comment to record.
Right. I'm sometimes looking for the answers to some of the questions, so that's why it's helpful if you track it and. I guess sometimes I'm looking for the answers to some of the questions, so that's why it's helpful if you track it and take lead on.
And I think also that some of those incorrect assumptions, we don't have to get drawn into it at that point, like they could, if they're talking about triplexes or whatever and it's the duplex, then they might say that offhand, we don't need to say anything then, but then we close the public hearing, we can say, I heard, you know, I heard some residents were confused about what this multi-housing actually means, uh commissioner, or um, Commissioner Crosby, can you clarify, were we talking about duplexes or triplexes? And that, and then we're not drawn into it with that resident, but then we can address it right away.
Something like that, I think you could as chair say it, like in if it as a real example, like this only involves duplex, I mean, like
Well, yeah.
to own that information too, I think is okay, like if there's no question, like, and I mean, it brought up so often
Okay.
that I actually was like, does this involve triplexes, like did I started to my second guess, like I second guessed, so like, and but I do think, I mean, and also I'm no expert, so, I mean, it's.
I think if I were chairing a meeting and there were a number of questions in the public hearing posed up, and and something basic came up, I would be concerned that addressing it out loud might even appear condescending. Before we ask the city planner some of these questions, I wanna acknowledge that Earth is round. That's not gonna happen.
I have to say it that way.
Exactly, right, I'm exaggerating for the sake of.
I teach middle school, I know how to not be kind of people with a middle school understanding of things.
But um being being in the audience and asking a question and getting a response is a sensitive thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
And acknowledging an asked question that isn't answered by saying, like, well, answer all of the questions at the end of the public hearing, I think is helpful, like as a, you know, like, the reason why we're not just skipping over your thoughts, like we're, you know, thanks for sharing, and you know, we'll be answering at the end, I think is.
That was something Catherine addressed well, saying straight up, this is a time for you to share and comment, and just to respond, respond afterward.
Alright, so in our in our theoretical public hearing, the developer still isn't here, uh Commissioner Rudolph, you had talked about that if the commissioner, uh the developer wasn't here, you'd like to maybe postpone or continue the discussion later. Did you want to move to continue the hearing till the next?
I withdraw that, you know, if if he doesn't have the time to show up, maybe it's not that important.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to close the public meeting, that's apologies for, I made a mistake.
Public hearing.
So I I see there's no one else from the public, uh it looks like there's no one else ready to speak, have we gotten any calls in the in the meantime?
No, no.
Alright, uh we need a motion to close the public hearing. Alright, there's a motion, do we have a second?
Seconded, Commissioner Sirma.
It's moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so we've closed the public hearing, now we can have our uh discussion. Uh Commissioner Rudolph, you had mentioned before, you were concerned the developer wasn't here, um you could, if if you you could discuss continuing the hearing, um if you think, you know, if you think that might be helpful for uh the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd say go withdraw that, if he doesn't have time to show up, you know, it's probably not important. He's got second thoughts of doing this development.
Did anyone on the uh mission, um oh, uh Commissioner Crosby, one one of the questions that we heard a couple times was they were wondering with how this would affect uh traffic on the street, has there been any um discussion about anticipated effects on, or any effects on traffic?
Um, well, we did not do a traffic study, but we did confer with our in-house um trans uh transportation engineer?
Uh yeah.
Are we getting here?
Uh I don't.
Anyhow, yes, and and he thought that the uh the amount, the uh uh threshold of added trips to the road was so so low that it uh it would not impact the uh functionality of the roadway.
Chair, uh I I would like to, actually, to convince us using cellular devices during the meeting.
I don't see anything. I don't, I don't see anything.
Do I need to be aware of that for other meetings?
Alright, um does anyone else have any question?
There's no motion to discuss on the table here.
No, there is not, we answered the public's question.
Yeah.
Okay, so to continue, we would need a motion, uh this uh report.
So we're only supposed to discuss, sorry, um we're only supposed to discuss after a motion is needed and seconded?
Cause that's what you're discussing, you're.
Yeah, theoretical.
Yeah, and you can have some discussion before, like it.
But it's it's question time before, and then it's.
Yeah. It's debate once the motion.
Right.
Right.
So I mean, cause there's gonna be some discussion that naturally arises from me or the developer answering the questions that arose during the public hearing, that's gonna be discussion, but when you put a a motion on the table, you need to discuss that motion, so um it's usual.
It's funny, I always think like you need the discussion before you know.
How to make the mo, yeah, what, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, especially if you're making a motion to amend, um.
Right, but I guess you, so you make the motion, like saying, presuming that you're going to approve it, and then you have the discussion, and then.
But the subject.
Sure. Yeah. Or or if you felt that it was very vague to, you could you could make a motion to deny the, to deny the request, and then we could have the debate would be on that.
Yeah, it's, the agenda is only a suggestion.
So you could say, I move that we that we um reject the staff uh recommendations and we not approve the project, and then we could debate that.
And then offer amendments afterwards if we feel, if we feel that that's necessary.
Yeah. Amendment and so on and so forth.
And you could, there's a lot of discussion that can happen, I mean, the motion can be at the very end and then you vote on it with no discussion, that that could, yeah, that's fine too.
I feel like that's what we end up doing.
Yeah, that can be.
It it does feel sort of uh natural to close the public hearing and like, okay, just uh.
Your thoughts, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's.
It's natural, I don't know if it's, that's gonna have to change.
So presuming that no one, let's just say no one has anything else to say, so we're, you you need a motion regarding the this agenda item.
Chair, I'll make a motion to uh.
Recommend the staff action?
Yeah, recommend the staff action.
We don't have to read the whole thing anymore.
Sometimes I like to, um just because it is like, I mean, some of this stuff is layered and complicated and
I mean. Sure.
uh putting exactly what you mean on the record, I don't always think that's a bad thing.
Yeah, but I mean, you can, you can, you don't have to say it.
And it's not always.
Okay, and you can just say like two lines.
And it's not always gonna be, I like the motion uh recommend approval as um you're as presented or as recommended by staff, cause then it implies that all of our conditions, they're all, you know, you're agreeing, you're all on board with all of them, but some of them won't be, you know, sometimes you're gonna wanna
Sure.
delete a condition or amend a condition, and then you're gonna wanna spell it out, so.
Yeah, that's when motions get complicated, if you wanna parcel, parse something out.
So that's for meetings.
Right.
Yeah, that's why it kind of makes sense, what you were saying about have we close the public hearing and then we're discussing, because then we'll come up with, oh, the developer said this, but we wanna make sure that they have the extra bicycles, or like staff said, we could reduce the bicycle so bicycle space as well. I don't think that's a good idea, it's a policy, we should not be letting developers not put enough bicycles bicycles spaces, then we can make the motion to approve staff report as with the with the change that deleting the.
Bicycle condition.
Yeah, deleting the bicycle condition.
You make the correct motion at the end instead of making one and changing it and drawing it, making a new one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
That's, yeah, that's good if you can do that.
We start to get tripped up sometimes.
But you might say to make five bicycle spaces and then uh, and the person might say, well, I think it should be seven, well, then she could move to amend your motion, you know, that would be.
So does a move to amend a motion require a second and a subsequent discussion?
Yes.
Yes, yes, and it needs to be voted on first before the original motion is.
So.
Sure, by closing all the projects.
I was just gonna say, I I just.
Yeah. It was like.
One of our reasons, right?
Could could that amended motion also be a motion to amend, like you could.
You can't amend it, you can't amend an amendment though.
Yes.
Okay.
And you can't like, there's most most rules of procedure don't let you, um like you can't amend, you can't, you can't keep opening, it's not like Russian dolls, you, there's a like a limit, there's a limit of how many you can do.
Who, what am I, who is that defined by?
Well, I think it's in the 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 default ones that the city that the city uses, I can't think of what they're called.
It was a parlor.
It's not interesting.
No, it's not Roberts.
It's uh Sturgis, let the bike.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause otherwise it gets way too complex, so that's the same, I think it's the same in Roberts and um the I can't, um Mason's rules of legislative procedure too, like you don't wanna have more amendments to amendments to amendments, because it's too complex.
You would just fail your first amendment.
Or you get the someone to withdraw, yeah, sure.
And then you would, yeah, yeah, draw, and then you would make another amendment to it.
That's a simpler way to do it, yeah.
I also feel like just the clarity, like it's, to me, the the most important thing is just being really clear, like what our intention is, like.
Sure. Yeah.
If um, you know, process like, it's not exactly what Sturgis tells us to do, like if we are very clear in the intention, I feel like we're on the up and up.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'd rather be clear on the intention than follow the rule of Sturgis thought.
I think substantial substantial kind of compliance, if we're, is kind of the target, we wanna, you can do the best of our ability, even if it's ninety-nine, that's okay, as long as everyone knows. Everyone leaves the meeting knowing what we decide, well, and staff knows what we are sending on to council or whatever.
Very clear, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, result is, I will say that um I've been, and I don't know that this is gonna be a universal law or in the future, but I have been applying the kind of criteria of if the applicant is like a hundred percent on board with all of staff's recommendations for the project, and there's a unanimous vote by the planning commission. And there's nobody from the public that objects or or has complaints about the project, then we're putting on an consent agenda for the city council.
The city council. Oh, it's.
So, I mean, they don't have to, kind of like the criteria, at least that I've been using, so um towards the end of the meeting, sometimes people ask, well, like, will this be, will this be heard again, and then that's how you might know how to respond to that question.
Can you explain that process or what that?
Consent agenda?
Yeah.
The consent agenda means that um the city council votes on the item with a bunch of other items that are on the consent agenda without talking about any of them, it's it.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Sometimes it'll be like to pay the city's bills for last month or something, so like they're not gonna go line by line over the power bill was this much and.
Sure.
Sure.
It's just, yeah.
But they can take items off of the consent agenda.
They can.
Yes.
Um so if there if there is a triplex amendment, and they say we, I know that planning commission was unanimous and nobody had any comments or concerns about this, but I still wanna discuss it, they will take it off the.
Things could change between pieces.
Yeah, and people could have contacted their council members.
So they'll take it off for their discussion.
Yeah.
The co, any council member can pull it off.
Yeah, when they approve the agenda.
Hopefully, they give us heads up.
I've just, I've seen them do that, I just wasn't quite sure what that all meant.
Yeah, yeah, it is really great if they give us.
Yeah.
Rose us off it.
I would just throw off. I was just saying, who brought guac and no gum, I'm like, garlic and oniony.
You need some gum?
I got some gum right in my pocket, my man.
Oh, sorry.
Take care of you.
Okay, um. So I don't know what we're talking about, oh, there's a motion, there's a motion to.
Yeah, motion to approve the request for staff report.
Alright, is there a second?
Seconded. Either one, you can take either one of ours, they were simultaneous.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the staff recommendation, is there any other discussion? Hearing, no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? And the motion carries. Um are we really gonna do public, another public hearing?
No. That was such a great discussion.
To make a motion.
Yeah, well, well, we're at the meeting, we're, so now we're doing nothing, so some there's, someone's gotta end the meeting.
So.
Yeah.
I said we keep the meeting open and just, just talk, you know?
I had a, I had a dream last month, that we didn't vote to adjourn, and we went home and we had to come back.
That's called a nightmare.
To adjourn. I was like, I'm never leaving one of these things again.
I'm working on those closure issues. Yes, no.
Commissioner Chelton, did you have, did you have something?
Uh I'd make a motion to close this.
I'm moved to close the meeting, do we have a second?
Sirma seconded, second that motion.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's the end of adjourning.